First of all, welcome here. Everyone, thank you for taking time out of what has turned into a gorgeous day. And sitting around this table with all of us, I'm Lori Martesca and I'm a member of the Berlin-Boylston Regional School Committee and the Boylston Elementary School Committee. And I'm also sort of in a sharing role as guest of this subcommittee of the school committee that's exploring many regional areas. What I would like to start with is introductions and I'd like to ask if you wouldn't mind, first of all, does everybody have a hand up? If you would not mind introducing yourself, indicating if you're representing an organization or a group such as parents or select board or whatever, and then one sentence about what your interest is in this topic. And if you were forced to come here, you should acknowledge that. But just one sentence, you will have an opportunity later in the meeting where our goal will be to really gather a lot of input. So this is just a brief one sentence, I'm here or I'm interested because. And we'll start at that and...
I think this takes a long time. Elizabeth Bennett. And I'm happy to say this is my 20th year Berlin Memorial. And I'm here because I'm the president of our teachers' association. So kind of here by default because not too many wanted to volunteer. And also, I have an interest because we had, I think, gone through a little bit of this before, so just to see where we're at again and to learn more about this and how it would affect the teachers and most importantly, the students.
Great, welcome.
Hi, I'm Chris Keefe. I'm on the Board of Selectmen in Berlin. I guess I'm here by default.
Well, didn't somebody want to be here?
I don't know, what else did you ask?
What's your interest? What's your primary interest?
Changed my mind. Changed my mind.
Is that a challenge?
It is.
Actually, we're delighted, to be honest with you, to have representation from any and all sides around this issue because the goal is to end up with the best possible decision going forward. And it doesn't help if everybody's already on the same page. Sometimes we miss some important things, so I'm glad you're here.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Beth Fletcher. I'm a teacher at Boylston Elementary. So I'm here as the teacher representative from Boylston. I also live in Boylston and I just think it's always been an interesting topic for me, this whole concept of regionalization. I've worked in districts where we have been regionalized, so I'm just interested.
And are you here willingly or unwillingly?
After the staff meeting, they, you know, we talked about who would be willing to come and it was really, it was really quiet in the room. And then a comment was made about, well, those of you who live in Boylston, you know, have to try and, I think, but I am actually happy to be here too. But I volunteered.
We're happy you're here.
Hi, I'm Detsy Trudeau and I'm an occupational therapist that services Berlin, Boylston, and Tonto. And I guess the reason I'm here is that I kind of have a dual interest. The first interest is kind of personal because I've bounced around between different contracts depending on need in the district at any given time. And so I felt that impact of being, I understood when I entered the system to be a unified system and realized that, in fact, each one operates very separately. And so that has impacted me personally, I guess. And the other side of it is having worked in all those schools that I realize, and they're smaller districts, which is wonderful, but because of that, sometimes your needs shift from year to year. And what does that mean when you've got staffing set up the way it does and how do you make those shifts happen with, I think, more efficient ease for the student population? So that you're servicing needs more efficiently. So that's why I'm here.
Thank you for coming.
And Karen Mulner, I'm the Director of Pupil Services in the district. And I guess I'm here because people like Detsy are generally in my department, most of the folks that are half-timer in my department. And it's, so I'm very interested in a better way of doing this so that we can keep really qualified staff in the district and don't take the chance of losing them because they don't know where their benefits are coming from one year to the next. And also because I think there's a lot of duplication that we do. There's a lot of things we have to do three times or nine times because of the three separate districts that is taking away from time with kids and time on education. And I'd like to see us find a way to streamline time.
Thank you.
My name's Bob. I'm here in the Director of Financial Services for the public schools of all three districts. My professional interest is related to streamlining my work, but I also want to kind of be a resource to address financial questions and concerns that people have. I'm interested to hear some of the issues that are raised from different parties and participate in the process.
Thank you. Dana, are you here for your shakeout today?
I'm your note taker. I've been superintendent of schools and, you know, it's funny, the very first week I was here, I think I was asked, five years ago, I think I was asked, just what every day, so are we regionalizing? Are we regionalizing? That was the very first question. So that was one of the biggest topics when I first got here. And it's been interesting to watch the studies, the research, and listening to the perspectives of different people, whether it's for or against regionalization. But I'm actually very interested to see where this committee will lead to and what people here from this committee feel will be in the best interest of our students moving forward and whatever that decision is, is how I'm going to proceed with all of my 200-plus staff.
And I'm Huma Rinesi. I'm a resident of Boylston in New York for the last 26 years. I'm also the newest member of the planning board at the town of Boylston. And I was actually volunteered to be part of this committee. For the vote, the planning board said that you are the newest dynamic member of the planning board and we would like for you to be on this committee. But seriously, I am very happy to be, to be part of this because I personally think that if we can improve the quality of education for both Berlin and Boylston school system, I'm for it. Anything that can, you know, enhance education and give better, you know, resources to the schools, I would love to work on that.
I'm Angela Yildiz. I'm on the Berlin School Committee and the Regional School Committee. I've been on the school committees for five years. And probably about 10 years ago, I first learned about how our school system actually was, a one-school, one-district sort of thing. And I found it odd. And so that interested me at that time. And then since being on the school committee, I struggle with the frustration of not being able to meet student need, but it's already been focused on. So I'm, I'm most curious to delve into local control and what that really means for our communities and see, see what that presents for us.
I am Matt Lozraides, resident in Boylston and a member of the Boylston School Committee and Regional School Committee. And I think my interest, similar to Angela's, is really helping to investigate how, how it's been ongoing without being regionalized for so long. And I'm surprised, and I speak to a lot of townsfolk, they're deeply surprised at the fact that it's not. So it is, again, a business would run, it feels so inefficient. And our business is educating kids, making sure we give them every opportunity we can. And I feel like this is, at least through investigating, is the opportunity to provide that to our kids.
I already introduced myself earlier. I'll just give you my one sentence, which is the very happy to be at this point in the discussion process because the school committee has been talking about this, we've done a couple of feasibility studies over a period of two or three years. And one of the things that's really gratifying about being here and having all of you around the table is that we don't have to make the decision by ourselves, that we can get community input, expertise from various sectors of the community and really make the best possible decision for our students. So thank you all for agreeing or for not fighting the fact that you were volunteered.
My name is Edward Galt. I've lived in Berlin for eight years now. Served for six years on this cultural council and now here as a part of the Berlin School Committee and the Regional School Committee. And I also am here as a parent, actually. I have a child starting here in the fall. So my, I have concerns as a school committee person, I also have concerns as a parent. In addition to the local control issue, I also have concerns about the quality of education we maintain and what regionalization is going to do and affect the quality of education. I do have some friends in Berlin and also some friends on the Finance Committee with great concerns about regionalization, whether it's going to result or necessarily possible. Just be here to make sure that the quality is upheld. The Boylston concerns, they were, that's why I'm here.
Great, thank you. Hi, Seth.
How's it going? All right, so I'm Seth Reitinger. I'm on the Boylston Finance Committee. I jumped at the opportunity to be a part of this. I mean, our schools, our schools are really, you know, the heart and soul of our community. It's something that I'm very passionate about, you know, making sure that everything's, you know, everything's done right. I'm glad there's, there's so many committed people who are here to really, you know, make sure that we're examining this from every single possible angle to make sure that we get it right. My official capacity here, I guess, as a representative from the Finance Committee is to, you know, kind of look at the financial impact and everything. As far as we're concerned, there hasn't been any overwhelming, hasn't been much overwhelming sentiment opposed to this. We're just more interested in what the financial repercussions will be. But for myself, I'm just, I'm just, you know, happy to be involved and, you know, like I said, our schools are really some of the greatest, greatest attributes of both Boylston and Berlin. And so I'm just very happy to be a part of this and, you know, do something great for, for our children.
Great, thank you. Hi, Darren.
I'm Libby Jumay. I'm a parent representative from Boylston. I have or will have two kids in the district, the oldest one only being in kindergarten. So I think I was excited to be here as I'm going to spend a lot of years here. And also, I am a teacher in another district, so I have the parent perspective as well as the teacher perspective and hope that that will be a nice balance.
Great, thank you, Libby.
My name is Rich Wheatley. I'm a parent. I come here willingly. I come here for selfish reasons, actually. I have a daughter at the second grade at the Berlin Memorial. I'm very interested to see how that will affect things and how this will change or if it will change anything for her. I also come with the teacher perspective. I teach third grade special ed at another district, so I'm kind of hoping that will help me here today.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christina Slokum. I'm a Berlin parent, very new to Berlin, which is why I was interested in coming in and seeing pretty much what the direction was and different things like that. I'm coming from Marlborough, which is probably the complete opposite spectrum of Berlin. But I was active in, in that district and saw different things in that district. And I'm interested to see where, where Berlin and Boylston are planning to go.
Great. Well, thank you all. I think the first thing that might be helpful is in your packets, and I do want to let you know that our goal in this process is to continue to be as transparent as possible. So we're sharing with you materials that include what kind of comments and questions have come up so far. We're also including what we used to call the Project Charter. And then we heard that that confused some people, that they were associating the word charter with charter schools. And this has nothing to do with charter schools, so we're changing the name. It's called Project, the Project Purpose instead of the Project Charter. And then the very last document is actually where I'm going to start, which is what we've called our Talking Point. And this is, this is an evolving document. This is where it guided us as we met various groups, Boylston, Berlin, Select Board, the teachers at all three of the schools. And it could form a guidepost for us moving forward as we talk to the public. But this is provided as a real working document. So your feedback, your observations, your corrections, your suggestions about how we could be more effective about talking about what we're trying to do or what we're exploring would be greatly appreciated. So I'm going to start just by a quick refresher for people that the current structure is that we have Tonto, which is a regional middle high school. Grade seven to 12 have been, not here here, but on this land since 1962. And grade six joined in 2013. So grade six came up from both of the elementary schools to join the middle high school in that year. There's Berlin K through five and Boylston K through five. And then there's actually another structure called the Superintendency Union, which is a structure that enables us to have one superintendent who can oversee the entire district. Is there anything else you want to add about that?
No, not really. One of the pieces that are interesting that I learned is in a regional district, a superintendent can get a six-year contract and in a superintendency union, we can only go no more than a three-year contract. So it's just one of the things that's just kind of interesting, why it's like that in most general law. A superintendency union also encompasses this, Karen is the PPS director and Bob Conrake also, as the business director, are also part of the superintendency union.
What should be done is, the current agreement was just amended to allow sixth grade, so we didn't have to rewrite or restructure. And we're not in the, the goal of this is not to rewrite or rebuild the district, it's to amend the current district.
Do you have a question?
We do have preschool in Berlin. It's not just K to five, it's pre-K.
Yeah, just in the Department of Ed, we just don't invest K to five, but we do have this good place. And here, pre-K is a Tonto.
Okay. So our purpose, and I will tell you that the first few times that we presented this information, this was an area that we didn't do that great of a job on. And we heard from a couple of people who commented, we were jumping in to tell people, you know, to remind people of all the inefficiencies that exist. And one of the, the first people that we presented to said, you know, if I were you, I'd really start about student education. And it was such a perfect point and kind of a miss on our part. So what we try to do now is be very clear because it is in fact the truth. What we're really all here for and what we care the most about is the educational achievement of the students and social and emotional learning of our students. So our primary interest and concern is advancing the goal of student achievement and social and emotional learning for all of our students in both communities. Accordingly, we wish to explore amending the existing regional agreement to incorporate the two elementary schools into that agreement. The reasons why, you know, one of the things that is in fact a reflection of inefficiency and waste, if you will, is the fact that Karen shared with us at school committee this past week that she had to submit nine?
Nine reports, so about three for each district, so you multiply that by three.
So, and that's just one example of many others. The issue isn't, oh, poor Karen, you know, she has to do this hard task and it's, you know, really boring or something. The issue really is, what is it that she could have been doing that would have advanced important educational goals for us? So that's really what the first bullet is highlighting, is there's wasted time and effort that really diverts from time that could be spent on educational improvements. There's also inflexibility around managing some of the educational assets as well. We do believe that regionalization is working well in the middle high school levels. We feel like the communities work well together around the middle and high school levels. We're also at a place, as a school committee, we evaluated the AD a short time ago, there's really prescribed process for evaluating the superintendent. And I think it's safe to say that it was pretty stellar evaluation. What that's a reflection of is that we're really happy with the direction the schools are going in. We feel like we've got stable leadership, that she's done a really good job in attracting people like Karen and Bob and Carol Castello and others, the principals at our schools. This community, both communities have been through periods and some of us haven't been there long enough to be a part of all that turmoil. But you don't have to go real far back to see periods where we went through superintendent after superintendent. And in many cases, what they would articulate would be the structure of the district is a very difficult structure for people working in central office. The school committee is also, you know, some people might say, why are we bringing this up again? Why are we talking about regionalization now? And I think a part of it too is the school committee is really well-unified. Not that everybody agrees on everything we do, but everybody has that same purpose and belief that student achievement is our priority. And we function like one school committee. We laugh about it because every so often, people vote on the wrong school, like me. I'm always voting on the wrong. It doesn't count, but there is that sense at the school committee level that we are all focused on the same thing. And the last thing is, there are probably 100 examples, right, of inefficiencies. We actually asked the central office staff to share a list, and there is a list that we'll be happy to share with you, that you can, so you can see the many, many things that have to be duplicated because of the separations. Will this save money? In reality, probably not. Russ Dupre, who's our legal counsel and who will be on this committee as an advisor, could not be here tonight, but he had shared with us, he's been through many of these efforts. And he said, rarely do these kinds of efforts result in significant cost savings. I'm sorry, Seth. But there are other elements to this that can result in cost reductions, cost efficiencies and that kind of thing. But it's also, there are some structures within the system that, for example, regional transportation reimbursement, NGOA. There is something called bonus aid from the state because they actually want to encourage regions to, or communities to regionalize. And the initial projection had some health insurance savings. We're not sure if that's how this will actually play out. One of the real challenges is when you do a feasibility study, you're making assumptions and you're doing it at a point in time. And when I look back at some of the financial stuff that we received, it already feels a little obsolete to me, so we're going to talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. I think the last, what's the process here where you've assembled this group, this is our first meeting, who's invited? The next step is for us to work on setting up two listening sessions with the community. We want to hear from the community in terms of their thoughts, their concerns, their feedback. And then spend a few months evaluating data, feedback, concerns, you know, reviewing financial aspects, looking at whatever data other schools that we can look at as examples. And then in the fall, we'd like to go back out to the community and share feedback and answer questions and really make it like a second round of both listening and providing some answers to questions. If this subcommittee agrees that we want to move ahead and make the recommendation, our job would be to recommend this to the school committee. The school committee will formally vote. And then proposed amendment language would be submitted to the DESE for approval. Once DESE approves, then the language and the, and the material will be ready for town votes.
Oh, sorry. No, let me just clarify that for one...
Oh, please.
Wait a minute. So what would happen is that if the school committee decides that they want to bring this forward to the town, the town actually would vote that yes, they want to do this or what have you. If the town votes yes, then you work with your committee to redesign, as well as with legal counsel, to design the terms to expand your regional agreement. There's not much, kind of like what Matt was saying, is that because it was revised back in 2013, there's not really much there that has to be changed. The biggest revisions were already done because the initial agreement was 1962. And so the updated language and everything was pretty much there. You're really, the regional agreement itself, you would pretty much have some tweaks to what you currently have. And then from there, then it goes to the Department of Ed. The Department of Ed, they get, they're the last to get it. And what you want to do is, if you do this vote in May of 2018, you want to make sure that by December 31st of 2018, the Department of Ed gets that actual document, as long as they have it in hand before the end of December. So that's, because otherwise, because what they're looking at, and then they will let you know if there's anything that happens. That's the same, that's what we do.
After the town vote.
After the town vote says yes, then you work on the actual language and then you give it to the Department of Ed for approval.
I think that's a little different. Maybe you change it. Because I was reading a document from 2010.
Yeah, we were reading a lynch document where I, so I guess we can look at this, but I thought the town was actually voting on your amendment. For example, when we moved the sixth grade up...
Do you want an amendment done by town meeting?
Yeah, yeah. I think what you're thinking of is that interim year where we're negotiating that new contract? No, this is different. This is the contract and the regional agreement are two totally different things.
Right. Okay. Here's what we're going to do. We're going to consult with us and ask him to kind of lay that out for us.
Yeah, because there are functional things that have to occur. Meaning, we have to get to a point where the town approves the concept of coming together.
Right.
We then have to also manage the creation of a amended regional agreement. And we have to get to the point of contracts and dispositions.
What happened when I got here for this is that the towns had already voted to agree to change the regional agreement to include sixth grade before I got here. I started in July of 2012 and then in November, the agreement had already been changed and then got brought forward to the town in November for approval of the actual regional language. And then in December, we submitted it to the Department of Education.
Okay, so we'll take a look at that process.
Because it wouldn't make sense to have the Department, let me just, I'm sorry. But it wouldn't make sense to give all of that stuff to the Department of Education if the town hasn't already agreed to even become a region.
I think the only premise with that is that you, it was just that, as I understood when the town voted, you wanted to make sure whatever you're voting on is going to be approved by Detsy. But what you're saying is the town will vote and then work on it and then the town will vote again.
Vote on the new language.
See, I think Steve Hammond gave us a different order. He did give us that you have to get approval from Detsy's votes.
That's how it was structured in his law. I think, yeah, I think it's the difference and the confusion, and maybe I'm wrong, and that's fine if I am, but I think the difference... am, but I think the difference and the confusion is a new agreement versus an amendment to a current, to a current region. Or maybe.
I would support, I think, what Angela was saying. I think the town, borough, and community play an active role in drawing that amendment out. I would argue that. Pressure that they're quite a few against it would help us feel a little more control in their community.
We can give clarification on that, I think, Russ, for sure.
And I think regardless of the timing, I hear what you're saying, and I would agree with that, that there may be concerns that a community or both communities have. An example is a concern that's come up is, you know, would we consolidate two schools into one school? And there are things you can do in the amendment that make it very clear that that can't happen without, you know, town votes or something, so that you're reassuring people that's not part of that.
And the whole thing, if the town is money invested in school and any child. So the uniform.
Oh, the people.
For budgetary purposes, I've heard that concern that one community spends more than the other, and the kids might wonder if they blessed because of that. But issues.
So let's move to that, that process right now, which is really, I'd like to invite feedback, comments, questions, what have you heard, what, what kinds of concerns or things do we need to add? There is a list, you can see, the third page is, it says feedback and questions and efficiency discussion. We have some answers, we don't have all the answers, if I may.
Laura, can I have a question on that? So during our discussions, we said we're going to take, we're going to listen, we're going to take feedback. We're going to listen to the concerns, and we were going to then try to, are we going to convene as a school committee or as a region, or is this the committee that's going to decide on answers to these? Because we're going to publish them, right, on the website at some point? So it has a collective group?
Yeah, I think what's important is your answer to not being in the factual base, right? So this committee, I think, would be doing the research, relation, those are the actual facts.
Okay.
That's a good way to put it. Okay. So comments, questions, concerns. One thing that had come up at our, with the conversation with the teachers is that comments were made that it's in the best interest of our students, and they certainly understand the triplicate and all of that. But to be a little more specific about in what ways will it really be in the best interest for our kids? What are our kids going to, what are the students going to, how are they going to benefit from this? I think one of the things we've thought about that would be helpful, it doesn't completely satisfy that, but it's a step. I think it came up at the select board, Chris, when we were talking too. Chris was suggesting, show how, you know, has the sixth grade benefited by being in a regional school? And that's one example of how you can sort of demonstrate how students might benefit. Another is to look at student achievement and where it is currently. But I think articulating of the variety of ways in between the student achievement will be enhanced in this is the best interest of the students.
What else? I think another way of identifying how it's in the best interest of students too is I think if we look at what are the concerns that we have now, and how can they be fixed, and can regionalization fix some of those concerns that we have now? Or is it a concern that regardless, it's going to be a moot point, right? So I think identifying where some of those concerns are. I know one that sticks out to me is really what Betsy was saying, is even with OT, and the same is true for PT and speech and, you know, our BCBA and all of those specialists with special needs that fluctuates from year to year, or let's say halfway through the year, ELL even. Last year, we had a huge issue with ELL. We had a huge population that came in, and that's English language learners, for those who don't know, out on the camera. But what we had was a huge influx of students with ELL at one school. We didn't budget for that one school. And so those students, we had to find creative ways of making it work till the end of the year, but it probably wasn't the best practice of what we did. It was the best of what we could do with what we had. Whereas if we're one region, for example, we can shift and fluctuate staff, we can rearrange schedules if we have to so that the ELL services, the same is true with OT, speech. We have somebody halfway through the year that moves in, and all of a sudden, we need a board certified behavior analyst to be working with that child. Well, we might not have that for that year, but we have somebody within the district that we could utilize. So those are some of the ways that we see in the best interest of our students.
I don't know if it's helpful, but I was just going to say, for instance, for the ELL, when we had a huge influx in Berlin, we were able to take, buy some time for Boylston, but in order to do that, we had to get rid of some things in Berlin that we would have been able to do in order to buy that time. Whereas if we had one person that we could flexibly move back and forth according to the need, we wouldn't have had to get rid of those things in the, in the end.
That's a good, other examples, other concerns, other questions?
You have another example would be the cost of adding district tuitions for special education. Two elementary schools' budgets are fairly small, and the cost of one significant added district placement could be sixty to ninety thousand dollars, and that's three percent of the, two to three percent of each school's budget. And that limits what we can do, otherwise in a school in a given year if that could occur. So it balances the risk a little bit. So it's just something to consider. And it really kind of limits our ability to invest in anything else in a given year when that occurs.
Other questions, comments, feedback, things you've heard?
A question that is maybe my ignorance about who actually owns the buildings, but school buildings are owned by the town, is that correct? And so I guess maybe one of the questions, someone asked it of me just unofficially, and I wasn't quite sure how that all worked, whether they would still own the buildings and if it was regionalized, or how we would go about that.
Do they lease the building to the district?
Is that something that we have to discuss with the towns and work out? For example, I, an example of how you would work that is that, yes, the regionals, I think the regional school, regional school district would lease the buildings. And as far as like capital repairs, you'd have some sort of threshold, say five thousand dollars. Any capital repair under five thousand dollars needs to be absorbed by the regional school district over that, and maybe bring it to town meeting for capital repair, just like. So that's, but, you know, what we end up doing, I don't know, but I ask that.
Question for other districts that have, well, there's no growth up for Lawrence Jarrett Genon here surely to find out how they manage their facilities and ownership.
It is noted on here because it did come up in one or both of the select board meetings around capital needs, that big capital plan. The back is like.
So we can look at, we can certainly look at that. I don't think the towns are looking to gain revenue off that thing, but I think it might be a dollar limit if you have to do something. But the capital piece is something that, there are different options. And if it's going to be something that exceeds the operating budget year, there's different approaches. It could be a threshold, it could be if you can't absorb it in your operating budget, bring it to, you don't necessarily want it, but you can absorb six thousand dollars, or someone would go to town meeting if you could offset it, say, in somewhere else. But so there's, there's ways to orbit it and to be green, there's different options.
I was just sitting here thinking too about, in so many ways, there's been a lot, so much progress even leading up to this in that we, the elementary schools have the same curriculum now, and that we get, do get together to do professional development and to plan curriculum. And I think that definitely is a positive moving forward, that those things have happened. So we're not two completely different schools.
I think, if I may, I think because it's happening now, does it mean it always would? Because it wasn't really a common threat. I mean, that's my vision, and that's as a leadership team, that's been our vision as a leadership team, but if a different leadership team were to come in, that might not be that person's vision or those, that group's vision, right? But that's been, that's been us, and that's why we changed it. So sometimes it's, you know, it's something to think about, yeah, it's working now, and we're already doing that, but it doesn't mean it's required or that it has to happen. When I got here five years ago, the biggest concern was coming here at Tohato and hearing the comparisons from my middle school staff, and how they could really see a big difference between the two towns where the students were coming in because the curriculum was so different. And some students from different towns struggled more than others when they did transition. So our goal as a team was, we need to fix that, that's a problem. And, you know, and it was pushed back because it was changed, right? I mean, just like any change is pushback. But the reality is, is this year, finally, we're hearing comments like, boy, you can't really tell from one team, one town to the other, they're really all coming in with the same foundational skill sets and so forth, and that, that's our goal. When I heard that this year, I said, oh, it's worked. You know, it's taken us four years to do it, you know, we're in our fifth year, we're finally seeing it happen. But that was our goal. And so that's what we've done, but it doesn't mean that every leadership team, you have to keep that in mind.
But if the districts were, if we were regionalized, they see it as a more, as a more have to happen, just for thought?
No, I think you're right. I think your point was a good point. It's a little bit of a conundrum in a way, because on the one hand, you guys made this work so well outside of the structure, but I think your point, maybe even your reason for bringing it up, that is, makes complete sense, that you want to institutionalize the idea that it's one elementary school system and that the curriculum is unified.
And that would take, see, my impression is, according to the chair of our finance committee, that one town spends more than the other. And that could be a problem if we're trying to make, we're trying to bring these curriculums together and make sure every child gets the kind of resources they need. For example, Eastside would be example of tablets. I guess children would be supplied with tablets. And we want, for every child to be able to have that, and we don't want the money to go down, we want it to go up, so every child has the same resources, educational resources in all areas, including, you know, special education.
And there may be value in that too, of even a larger buy, in the sense that if you have a larger district, you may be able to actually get beneficial costs. So there's something to even think about financially if you're, say, tablets, because I think both of the schools are pretty close, right, with a one to one ratio, or, you know, that's the goal.
Yeah, right. Boylston right now does not have one to one in K1 and 2. They have a 3, 4, and 5.
Okay. So we get that too, so.
So the bigger picture point that Ed is really raising, that I think is an important one, and I'm not sure we reflected it here yet, is the reality of the spending levels in each of the communities, which are in fact disparate. If you look at the foundation budget percent that Berlin spends, something like a hundred percent more than foundations, is that right, Chris? And Boylston, it's more like twenty, thirty percent?
Yeah. There's a check.
So there's, there are some differences there. I think part of what, if I'm in Berlin, what I'm interested in is, is that a reflection of prioritization somehow? Or are there other, I mean, we know there are some differences in what's included in that, right? We know that there are differences in teacher salaries and. Did you want to comment on this point, Chris? I feel like you know way more.
Can you be more specific, what, what you're looking for?
If you were representing somebody in Berlin who might have a concern about school spending, how would you articulate that concern? What would be the concern?
The concern of a, like, citizen in Berlin? They don't usually, they're very supportive of the schools. I don't tend to hear a lot about, one of the things that has been a concern though is that, having been on the finance committee too, we have never had to deny the schools what they're asking for at Tohato, because we leave that up to Boylston. I hate to say it, but Boylston will be the one who say, no, we can afford this, and then we'll get our portion, which is fine. In, at Berlin, we, and Asabit, because we're members of both districts, we have, I think we generally supported the budgets. And we don't look at it as, we're only going to spend this much on education. We want to make sure that the districts are supported the way they need to be.
So that's where I'm trying to understand the nature of the concern that some people raise. Is it a concern that Berlin is placing a higher priority on education than Boylston by virtue of its spending? Somehow, I'm asking, I'm not.
I can only speak for Berlin. I think they really do have a high priority of education.
Yeah, to answer your question, I have to say, working in both towns, Boylston and Berlin, it's not so much that they think that, that Berlin thinks, from my feedback, that Boylston doesn't put a high expectation on education. That's not been a judgment that I've heard. What I've heard is similar to what Chris is saying, is that the concern is, Boylston always tends, or has tended, I shouldn't say always, but in the past, has tended to say, we don't have that money for it, right? For it. It's not that they don't value it, but they don't have the financial resource for it. Where Berlin has been on the other side, in my experience here, that what is it you need? And, and it's not, you know, it's not an open book, like just what do you need, but just, and they've been, you know, and why you need it. And once you explain, this is what you need, this is what we need it for, this is why this budget has gone, and when there's a rationale and a clearer picture with it, it's been very supportive of, well, you know, you have good years, bad years, you have, you know, successful where you don't need any, and you have some where you're going to need more. Some years you can need more. Boylston has not been financially in that position to do so. It's not that they don't value it, and that never has been the judgment in my years of what I've heard. Yes?
I would say, I attended the town meeting, and I would think a lot of townspeople are concerned, you know, is this going to affect my taxes? I think the specter of Proposition 2 and a half, whether you understand what that is or not, I think scares a lot of people. I was very surprised at the town meeting when it was announced the taxes were going down. That was a fantastic idea. That doesn't happen everywhere, you know? But when, you know, you go through each align item and have to vote within the town, there were, especially in regards to schools, there was some dissent in the sense of, well, the playground looks fine to me, why do you need that money? So I think there is concern, but I agree with you. Everything was voted in, and I think maybe on, on the wave of, my taxes are actually going down and I can fund my school, you know? But I think townspeople are concerned of, is this going to affect my taxes? And is this some sort of Proposition 2 and a half concept? And I think if you can calm people's fears of that, I think it's more of, well, you know what, then why don't I leave the education to the people who understand what they're doing? If it's not affecting my tax bill, then maybe I should let the teachers and the administration handle what they do best. But I just, I would say that would concern a town member.
Have you heard similar?
I was just going to say, it's, I think that's one thing both communities have in common, and that's a great point. That's one of the. That's one of the...
All communities have that.
Yeah.
And I think our approach to that when we first started coming up with concepts here too was that conservative in nature, the fear was bringing it to the boards and the select boards, that there was going to be a financial repercussion, that was going to be the first concern. And the surprise, I think, that we heard across the board is that as long as it's providing better education, the towns are going to be supportive. As long as we're doing the right thing for the kids and the educational side of things, that's not the first, but the first question isn't financial. The first question is, is it going to benefit? And if it benefits, both towns are going to be willing to generally support that direction. Again, if it's overwhelming, obviously, that's a whole different discussion. We don't begin to, but...
And there are differences in the economies of the two communities. Boylston has struggled with a few things. I think it's looking better on the horizon, I guess, which is encouraging for all of us. Bev, you have something?
Maybe if you explained this and I just don't get it, which is very possible. I guess I'm a little confused about the whole budget for the schools and the regionalization budget. And, but yet each town during their town meeting is going to vote a certain percentage that goes to the school. They're not going to be the same. I'm assuming Boylston's budget's going to be different than Berlin's budget. So how does that all fit together?
What I'm going to suggest, I can take this, I can take this really lame attempt in these ways. I think the best thing might be for our next meeting to ask Bob, if you would put together or even use some from Avery and Gruber, whoever, they give people an overview of how the funding and financing works.
Sure. I mean, I can start too with how it's done now, which I think is straightforward. The regional budget's allocated on...
So I'm supposed to stop for a minute? It's straightforward for you. Yeah. I know, I started off like, oh. Pretty straightforward.
You start with the, if Berlin, if Berlin pays for the Memorial School right now, Boylston pays for the Boylston one, so that's the easy part.
That I get.
And then the regional expenses are allocated based on student counts. Basically, a relative number of students in each district. That's not just students who attend the school, it's students who are of school age of 6 to 12, that they'd like to go somewhere else, they're part of the count as well. And that's, that's specified by the agreement. And that's typical of how some of the regional budgets work.
So that's simple, right?
Well, yeah.
And that's also statutory, that is. That is getting at an issue that we are going to have to dive into eventually because there is the whole issue of how assessment happens. And that's what Angela's alluding to. Because one of the things that the feasibility studies have tried to predict is how many students are going to be coming in or going out of each of the two communities. And that's, that's real crystal ball stuff. And it already looks obsolete and long when I look at it, based on what we're seeing right now.
Yeah, right now, just to give you an example, Berlin Memorial has been staying pretty status quo with their enrollment and, you know, projections for next year. It's been pretty status quo. Boylston has been going down the last few years. However, the last two weeks, we are seeing, literally two weeks, we are seeing this huge expansion coming in. And, you know, like last week, he's called me last week because we have one grade in particular, that we have five new students in one grade for next year. And so we don't, and this is only the first week of June. So we don't know what's happening in July and August because it's usually that first and second week of August, we get bombarded with students. There are a couple, there's some talk of a couple that are leaving and might be going to another town, but we're seeing a huge influx at Boylston over the last couple of weeks. So who knows? And, and the majority of the move-ins are not the new developments. The majority of the move-ins are homes where we've had some maybe older families that are moving out, or they're selling their parents' homes, since young families coming in, buying them as nice starter homes or what have you. So past year, we're seeing the majority of our student population growth right now.
Okay, so our next meeting, we're going to see slides that will make this simple and memorable and fun. It is really important that we understand how this works because it's a crucial piece, obviously, of what everybody's going to be interested in moving toward. Are there any other big...
Could I add on to that? Because we'd be regionalizing and becoming larger in student bodies, how does that hurt us or help us in the sense of grants or state funding, federal funding, who knows? But how, how will that affect us? Will it be beneficial for us? Or will there be grants that we won't be able to access anymore? Will we still be considered a rural community if our numbers suddenly double or triple? I don't know. I think the elementary schools are about the same, about 200 or less than 200 each. So how does that affect our bottom line, that we were able to access certain grants, but because of that, are we now missing, missing out on that time? Or are we opening up a whole new Pandora's box of money that we never anticipated? That's, that's something that I would be curious to...
That's a great question. First, I just want to ask, Chris, is there an update? What's happening with those homes in Berlin that were going up by a school?
The hearing is continuing.
Okay.
I think the next date is like the 21st or the 24th. And that is, that is a big concern of, as far as the rural schools grant.
Right.
But that's just because houses would be built within a certain perimeter of the...
Of the actual school?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I can't get a straight answer from any one of the stars if it will affect it, but it will affect it at some point.
Because that's only 15 houses, isn't it?
Twelve.
Twelve, okay. Because I mean, I live in an area where 32 houses, single-family houses are going in. And then beyond that, there's maybe three new single-family houses that are being built. So those are ones that are already ready to go.
Berlin's been being very careful about and very...
Absolutely. Is it 16 houses a year that are permitted or...
I'm not sure what the number is in the bylaws, but we've been trying to be very careful. And we've also got something like 9.5% of affordable housing.
Correct.
We need another 5%. And we don't have to accept any more 40B projects.
Right.
So it's unfortunate that we're not already at 10% and we could deny the one that's near the school, but...
Right. So the rural schools, the reason why I ask is rural schools grant is something that the town of Berlin currently gets.
Right.
And the region currently gets because Berlin gets it. However, what will happen is that building could...
Tip the scale of...
It will tip it where most likely you won't get the rural schools grant anyway. So that building housing could be the impact.
Not the combining of the schools.
Not as early to combine. If you do combine, though, Bob has been doing some research because it looks like there's a potential that we wouldn't get it if we combined. Each year, that rural schools money is declining. And as a matter of fact, two years ago and last year, we were both threatened that we weren't getting it at all.
Okay.
So it looks as if that's kind of going away to begin with. So I don't know, Ed, you wouldn't have it most likely, but we're still researching that to see. But it looks like it's going away within the next couple of years regardless.
Whether we do anything.
Right. Is it a federal? Rural schools grant is a federal grant.
It's a, it is a federal grant.
It is federal, okay. I thought it was a state.
It might be funded, federal routed through the state, but it's a federal sourced grant.
Yeah. And, right. And basically what we've learned is that Boylston Elementary, if it was actually built literally on the other side of the street, most likely they couldn't have received it. It's about the location and how close or far they are from the highway. Right? And the density of the population now.
Fifty years ago.
And even now, but even now with all the new building behind Compass Point and all those homes so closely dense by the school, most likely we wouldn't have it anyway anymore. But, so those are all different types of impacts for the rural schools, but hasn't, have they been decreasing it significantly each year?
Karen?
I was just going to add, most of our other grants are all based on students. So the number of students, like Title A, special ed grants, so the number of students, the total number, it would just be one pot instead of two.
And you'd have to do fewer grants. There are...
There you go.
In Berlin, is there going to be any effect on the schools where they put a hotel where that water tank is and then across the street from Riverbridge, or Riverbridge is it? That's been coming for years? So does any of that then go back into the town? So may, you know, people would say, gee, you know, if you have concerns with the taxes and things, but maybe would help out with that situation because, well, that's been coming for years, but...
It's coming.
It's coming.
It's coming. And for those of you who are interested in Berlin, the Economic Development Committee, we have Nat Sunny coming, who's the one who is the owner of Riverbridge. And he's coming to our, come on the Berlin Academic Development Committee as well. And he's coming to speak to us. And it's at 5:30 at night, it may be a little bit earlier, so it was easier to do. But he's welcome, anybody, doesn't have to be a Berlin resident even, but to come and listen to what his future plans are. We have some questions, what he's looking at. But that's on June 29th at 5:30. If anybody's interested in going to listen. We've had even Boylston Selectmen even come and listen as well to our development committee and ask questions and to get ideas of even how we can economically grow in this town too.
That's one of the biggest issues that gets at what you were talking about earlier, about the tax base and...
True.
Boylston's greatest challenge is economic development really because we just don't have the opportunities that Berlin has as far as some of the revenue. So that's a real challenge and that's a challenge that affects the schools greatly in terms of future funding.
We're seeing development now, which is opportunistic timing for all these conversations.
I know of people that are interested in opening even small businesses here in Boylston, but they don't know where to go or what to do in the town of Boylston. There's not, no building, there's no police, you know, or there's like no storefronts or anything like that, so it's quite...
Okay. I'm going to recommend, given the time, that we move on, but we will out a lot of time at each meeting for people to share, hey, I heard this, what about this question? We also will start bringing back at least basic info, what we can find that begins to answer some of the questions. I realize it's not that satisfying to just keep asking questions and no one ever has any information or answers to add. We can't answer all of them because we won't know the answers to all of them initially. But we can, there are some we clearly can. And so we'll start filling in some of those answers. The next topic is really scheduling listening forums in the community. My question to you group is, is it realistic to try to sneak in two forums, one in each town before the end of June? Is that realistic? Is that desirable? Is it that, what are we doing? Are we just saying we're going to wait until September?
So I think it would be ideal if we could get it before the end of school, which there's so much going on. Because then the fear is you have a dispersment, everyone goes away on vacations and holidays, and the last thing people are going to want to probably do is come to a school and have a conversation, right? But I think it's vital that we get what and we listen to what people have to say. So I know it's a rush in two weeks to try to get a time. I just think it would be better. I think, I think it's worth the push.
Does it have to be before school's out? Could it just be, or do most people go away right now? Some people go away right after.
Yeah, I think a lot of people will take off.
I just, I don't, I don't know if we can do it two weeks though either. Like, I think that's a lot to ask of...
Well, the one thing our Selectmen said in Berlin was even if you had a small turnout in your first listening session, you know, at the end, before the summer kicks in, it would be televised and you'd have to repeat one in the fall anyway.
Nate, you guys are pretty locked up with end of year meetings, am I correct?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I have like the fifth grade recognitions in here and I've got the eighth grade recognitions in here and I'm just trying to look, but the only thing I'm thinking about is on that Tuesday, June 20th, you originally had a potential regional school committee meeting that night. That might be an option. I'm just saying if you picked maybe two, like, or did back-to-back on the last week of school, it might be easier.
And we want to hold them in each community, not...
No, no, that's what I mean. Like night, from one night to the next. So you did two nights in a row and one night in Boylston and one night in Berlin. And maybe if it's too hard for everybody on the committee to be there, maybe those that live in Boylston, it's easier to be in the Boylston one this time, and then those in Berlin could be in the Berlin one. You know, everybody can be in both, I don't know, you know?
So would it work if we looked at Tuesday, June 20th and Wednesday, June 21st? So if we were doing Tuesday, June 20th, we'd probably go with the time we normally would be scheduled, which would be seven, is that correct? We don't have to, we have to go earlier or... What do people think is...
I don't want to go earlier. Is that... I just, before working families, I think it's hard.
Today, what's the date today? Today's the 8th of June? So it's Tuesday?
Tuesday, okay.
That would be at 7 o'clock at night.
Tuesday, June 20th.
And then Wednesday, June 21st at 7? And where would we do that? Maybe at the elementary school?
That's probably a good idea actually, is that each one you could do at the elementary school. And that's where it's, those are the areas that are not showing, right? It might be nice to maybe do it at a different location.
Yes. How will we get to where that... That's a great question.
Janet's recording it for you right now, so...
There's always Facebook as well as the local PTOs. I mean, PTOs tend to have active members anyway. At Berlin Memorial, it's called Link, but it is essentially a PTO. Those, you know, as I said, parents who are already interested and involved, it might not be a very hard sell to post on their particular...
I know in Boylston, our PTO has done a meeting, but we still converse, of course, so...
Absolutely. I expect people to be asking me on Facebook, oh, I see you went to the meeting, what happened?
Yeah.
And that's kind of how it happens.
Parents. The banner. Would be a banner.
And the item.
And the item.
Yeah. And Berlin has their own Facebook page and their online Boylston Board.
And those neighbors.
Yeah, Berlin Neighbors Connect. Because they're there.
Oh, Boylston has that too. It's actually kind of a cool thing, isn't it? Yes.
It's a lot, man.
I guess we have to decide which town is for which night.
What's most convenient for...
There is a ZBA hearing on Wednesday, the 21st in Berlin, so...
So the 20th would be better for the...
Better if you're wanting us to come.
Yep. You got it. So Tuesday, June 20th at 7:00 PM at Berlin.
At EMS.
EMS. And Wednesday, June 21st, 7:00 PM in Boylston at the elementary school. Would you, where would you do it?
Library?
Yeah, yes. What do you use for, is it the cafeteria area? What is the area you use in where EMS?
Use the cafeteria. Why the gym?
Yeah. It depends on how big the crowd is. The crowd isn't...
I'm thinking it's not going to be huge, but what do you...
The library is better for acoustics.
Yeah.
The cafeteria, I don't think I'd go a little bit.
Yeah, maybe we could have the rooms with the tables out of the library.
Yeah.
Because then it just goes chairs. Yeah. Let's say the library in both.
Okay. At both schools. That makes it easier too. Okay? That's a big check mark. That feels good. In terms of agenda for those listening sessions, talks would maybe be a little bit similar to today, but which you prefer? You know, going through those talking points, maybe what, why are we here? What are we trying to do? We might, how do you, I've had this question for you guys anyway. How do you feel about your names being publicly available to people as members of this group? How do you feel about your names being publicly available to people as members of this group? Is there anybody who would prefer not to be considered? What I mean is...
You made us introduce ourselves already. You made us introduce ourselves.
You couldn't come, you come, you know, right?
For those sessions, I mean, I think if we have a, the talking points to go through, I think providing, it sounds corny, but some sort of a written sheet when they sign in if there's questions or the ability to submit questions ahead of time would be a beneficial tool for those who don't want to publicly speak about things, maybe they're uncomfortable.
Great, yeah.
Getting the ability to submit those, and then we can just talk through them. And I think that the five or 10-minute overview is all we want to do. And it is just that, it's a listening session. It could be, I hate to say it, people could be coming to complain and just get rowdy about it and frustrated, great, that's what we want to hear. Or they could be coming to say why they're signing in a positive manner. It's, it's really that opportunity to get folks out to speak their minds. And some of them don't want to speak, so there's got to be a way to collect. But we also, I think, need to have some sort of a moderator process, whether it's an assigned independent moderator from, I hate to say independent, but somebody that can kind of hold the room for us.
I think it's also important to get the word out that this is not targeted just towards parents of Boylston Elementary, but it's really the whole community. Because eventually, the whole community will be voting on it, and it's important to inform everybody.
It's a good point. We still do need to somehow recruit community members too. So in addition to this opportunity, it would be helpful if any of you have a neighbor or somebody you know that you think would be interested as a community resident in joining us. We'd love to have that perspective at the table as well.
I have a couple of questions at the end of the meetings, and I apologize. As a group, do, is there a voting right and authority as this collective party towards decisions that might be made? And then the follow-up to that is, if not, are we opposed to having more community members join that aren't sort of part of the core group? Obviously, it's a public session, so anybody can come.
Anybody can come.
Yeah, but they're not ultimately going to, are we making decisions that require vote at any point?
So this was one of the questions I kind of brought forward to Lori, is I want to get a little bit clarification from Russ and Berkeley when we have our next meeting. It's us as a committee, Russ can answer some of those questions, because I also had that question. I have a question about organization of the committee. Do we have to have a vice chair? Do we have a secretary? Do you have, like, I don't, I don't know the answers to that. And also, where the committee, the school committee appointed a subcommittee, the subcommittee identified who we wanted. We never officially actually stated, here's the name of the people on the committee, and had the school committee actually vote that they are, and I don't know if we need that as well. We talked about it, we acknowledged it, we stated who they are. But those are just some of the technicality questions that I want to make sure if we're going to do this, that we're doing this all the right way for everybody as well.
Do you want to ask Russ or do you want to be...
I will ask Russ all those questions.
Thank you. Great, so the other item on the agenda is just really to mention process briefly. We already asked if Bob would bring some sort of simple slides for us to, so that we could all gain the same understanding of how the funding and financing works for the schools. I think a secondary and maybe a later part of the process is really undertaking that more in-depth look at what's available, but also what other data needs to be pulled in, what needs to be updated. And Bob, you had an interesting comment to me earlier, and I don't know if you want to share that again?
About the financial, the financial aspects? Well, so the two studies that were done, and I think a lot of studies, there is some, there's a lot that goes into it, but there's this, there's an element that's passive. I mean, there are decisions that are going to be made that have a big impact on, on the, what the financial outcome is, so it's not all that this is just going to happen to the two towns. There's, there's decisions that will be made that will impact what the, what the financial outcome is. So that's, I think, part of the process. Need to get a little bit of information and guidance on what people, what people's opinions are, what the financial outcomes to be, and that might help steer the group to figure out potential solutions, or maybe, maybe they can't be overcome, but I think that's something to think about as we go through this. It's not just, what's this going to look like? Because, you know, what are some of the decisions that are being made that kind of lead to that? Or what do the towns think the outcomes need to be in order for this to be successful?
So we talked briefly earlier this evening about the potential for a sub-sub committee. How many layers down, here we go. That would focus on the financial aspect. And Seth has agreed that he would work with Bob, and maybe there may be others who would be interested in sort of doing some work over the coming months around, really diving into the financials. So would you think that is interested, feel free to maybe let Bob know.
I think it would be great to have somebody from both towns.
Yeah, I think that would be very...
So the Berlin Finance Committee is meeting on June 14th, and they at that time will determine who the Berlin Financial Board member will be.
Great. So the last thing is future meeting dates. If we were looking at July, what are the odds that people would be available this same? This is the second Thursday in June. If you were looking at, I think it's July 13th, maybe? How many people could be here on July 13th at 7:30 or...
I would...
I don't think someone else.
Because I don't think you'll ever have it.
Very unhappy.
Oh, and someone else is going to be in Los Angeles, but...
I'm trying to write it, but can we just write it in as the, the next two second Thursdays? As tentative and...
Do you have a calendar, but I'm locked out of my calendar.
Tohono'oe won 3-0 by the way.
Yes! We're 21-0.
Yeah, they threw a no-hitter.
Wow.
Wow.
So the next game is Saturday, definitely cross... Do you know what's on? I don't know the...
I might have been...
Or you stop, this is, this is just on... We're supportive of our schools.
It went, oh, okay.
On August?
Yes.
Second Thursday would be the 10th.
Okay, so July 13th and August 10th. And for now, why don't we stop with those two dates?
Yeah, 100% on the 13th and the 10th, we can be 75% and I'm sure you will.
I can't come.
We're going to, I think the assumption is we're never going to have everybody at all times. If we do, that would be amazing.
Okay, in three minutes, what I'd like to do to close the meeting is just go around the entire room and put each of you on the spot and just, you know, what's your thinking? Do you have any comments? Was there something you want to say, you need to say? Do you have an observation about the meeting? Do you have a hope for the future? Just a comment. You know, how about if we start over on the sun?
Yeah, I was actually ready.
Oh, are you ready?
You have the right to.
I would start on a positive, because I've been in Berlin for 20 years, and I don't think there has ever been a time where I haven't felt supported or that the children haven't been a top priority. You know, I look around at my friends who are teaching some tough districts, and, you know, I, to have the class sizes we have, to have the beautiful facilities we have, abundant technology, supports at our fingertips, both the time when Betsy's there, I can run and grab her, sometimes she's not there. But I just want to say thank you, thank you to the Berlin community, and thank you to the school committee, you know, superintendent, and everyone who pulls it all together, because it's, it's a gem, it's a hidden gem. And I think I can say the same for Boylston too.
A little bubble.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think sometimes people realize how, how good it is.
Oh, they're realizing.
Coming in, yeah. It is, we're very fortunate.
That's a really nice comment.
We're not supposed to editorialize. Hey, Chris, that gave you a hard act of thought.
It is, it is. But like, like you said, I think kids are top priority. Hopefully, in both towns, and I think that's going to be the biggest thing, is to prove and to show how it will help kids academically. It's, that's just really important. And if you, you can say it all you want, but you have to show how, so people can grasp it and understand.
I think, I agree with what Elizabeth said. I mean, I think there's so much in our schools. I think the teachers are unbelievably caring, the administration is caring, and everybody really does, I think, want what's best for the students. And I just look around at the number of people that are here tonight that also have an vested interest in what's best for kids, and that's a positive thing.
From my perspective, I have worked in all three districts. I mean, it's all, the, the families have been wonderful, the staff are wonderful. And it's a, it's a caring place in all three places. Everyone's there for the students, and I always get a sense that the students are the top priority. I have to say, in looking at this, I can feel for the people in the community as far as dealing with this issue and trying to come to resolution, because there's a lot of elements that have to be addressed. And I guess, you know, I've experienced it and been experiencing it, and I still look at the list and realize there's, there's a lot of things that we really have to resolve to get to that end point and to make a decision of either yay or nay. So it's an important start, I guess.
I, I, I just think it's wonderful to see towns and parents and everybody coming together to look at this issue, so we can look at it from all sides. I think we know from our side, but everybody brings up some really good points that maybe we haven't thought of, so I'm really grateful to all of these people for giving up their time to help us look at this.
So I've only been in education for 10 years, finance for 25, and education for 10 months. I've learned a lot about education, the administrative team, and about the two communities. I've interacted with a good amount of my parents on the more about transportation. And, but I feel like these are very good communities to work in. And I, I hope to just be a resource through the process. I don't think that there's necessarily easy answers to things, but I just hope to be able to help work through, answer questions. I hope that we can kind of collectively as a group, kind of produce information and we can share with the community. Because I think there's a lot to absorb. And I know as a citizen in my town, sometimes when these things come up, whether it's a school or something else, it's kind of overwhelming in your day-to-day life to be able to get access to information. And I think that's one of the most important things we can do is to be able to share it, even if it's not, people can't attend meetings, but using our website and other ways to, to get information out.
So Karen and I have only worked together for five years, but you can tell we're very closely together, because she took all of my words right out from, from my brain. But I just, first of all, I honestly want to say thank you to each and every one of you for being here tonight, because this is a very difficult conversation. It's a very difficult topic, and it's a hot topic in both towns and both communities. And to stand here tonight, sitting here and coming together, already you're making history. No matter what happens, you're making history for the future of, of the towns and the community. And that, that means a lot to me. I mean, I've only been here five years, but I wish I had actually already been here 25 years, because it's such a great community to be a part of. I just, I love Boylston and Berlin a lot, and I'm very excited to just hear the conversations that everybody just had just tonight and hearing those questions that are controller. But it's a very special place, and I value what all of you have do during the day is to know you still have come here this evening. It shows that this is just as important to all of you as it is to us, because whatever gets decided is really our future too, and how we can drive your vision and your mission and how we view that, so, thank you.
Really, no one else to say that hasn't already been said. I agree with everything. I think sometimes this process, when I think about it, it overwhelms me and it scares me. But then I think of the kids, and I'm like, I have to try. We have to try, we have to explore it for them. And I agree with Chris in that I'm looking forward to getting into some of the statistics and some of the actual showing, physically, concretely showing how this will help. And I think a byproduct of that is actually going to be good marketing for our elementary schools and our high school, because I agree with Elizabeth. I think all three schools are hidden gems and are underrated. And I'm excited for our communities to start learning more about the great things that are happening in the schools.
What are the important things? I, I think, I think, I have a couple of things, but I, and one of the most important things is we all remark on this, is if we were to strip away the street addresses and wherever from, I think there's a lot more common things about all of us in the room as it pertains to our kids. I think there's more like than dislikes, right? There are more things, we're all on the same page about the kids' educations. We're very fortunate towns, we live in these wonderful boroughs that are our communities. So I think we have more in common, and I think we need to remember that as we go through. Because there'll be bumps and there'll be some, some nicks and some bruises, but at the end of the day, we have so much more in common, and we're very fortunate for that. So I think we have to leverage it and take advantage. But I also come, I, I think about it when I first came onto the school committee, is the single biggest frustration I had when I looked at the gems that we have here is that I want our communities to be a destination for the best educators, the best administrators. I want people in districts in Boston, Springfield, and New Hampshire to say, I want to work in that district. They're making changes and they're impacting kids in like ways that nobody else. I want them to beat down the doors to come here, not say, gosh, am I a 2.5 or a 2.4? Which building do I work in? Where am I getting the paycheck and where are my benefits coming from? We have those conversations with our teachers. They don't want to be here, right? It's challenging. So I just want this to be a destination of employment for educators. That's, that's why I, with three kids in the district, that's why I'm here.
You know, you said that at the school committee meeting once, and it really helped the group move to another place in a thought process, that, you know, the schools have made a lot of progress, and if we want to just stay where we are, we can continue as we are. But if we really want to be that kind of district that attracts the best and brightest and keeps the students in the community, we really do have to be able to work in new structures, new ideas, new thoughts. I just want to thank you all, because I've learned a lot tonight, and you added a great deal to this process, so thank you.
Thank you. I was very satisfied with the way this meeting came out, very constructive. I was happy to be here and be a part of this. I was able to present the views of the people that depended on me to be that. Felt like I played an instructor role in my job. And I'm looking forward to being an ongoing participant in this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, there's obviously, there's a lot of moving parts here. There's, you know, there's, it's a very complex issue. There's a lot of moving parts, both financially and otherwise. And I think we've got a great group of people here to make sure that we're really tackling this from all the different angles that are necessary to make sure that we, that we get it right. And I, and I think we all have a shared interest in the bottom line, and that not being financially necessarily, but the bottom line in this is being what's best for our community, and more importantly, what's best for the children of our community. And I think we're on the right track to... And I think we're on the right track to, you know, coming to a good conclusion in these regards.
Yeah, it is really heartening to hear everybody in the room from all different perspectives putting the children first, and that is why we're all here. I think it'll be really interesting to get to the step where there are more answers than there are questions. It is really daunting, and what intrigues me most is like how all of these questions are going to be answered, and how that's even possible. So I look forward to be parting, being a part of that opportunity and hearing what some of those answers are, so we can make a decision.
I so appreciate you allowing us to come here today and be part of this, whoever set that up, thank you very much. Also, you were talking about the bumps and bruises and the, I have to say, after listening to everybody here, I have to say, I don't, I'm very concerned about that. Everyone here seems to take everyone else's words, you know, well, whether they agreed with them or not, and it seemed like a great group of people to be working with. So thank you.
I also wanna say thank you, because I'm, I'm brand new, I haven't been in town more than a year. My daughter had a great first year, but you've confirmed for me that I made the right choice. I left a district where, I actually have a college freshman, so, and an eight-year-old. So I've kind of gone through a district and, and sort of understood, and the points that were coming up of, that you have a common curriculum between both elementary schools, so that when they get up to middle school, that, you know, that, I'm not used to that. That amazed me, and thank you for that. Also, that you have a long-term superintendent. Most towns, their superintendent leaves every three years, and that's not only difficult for a continuity of vision, but for teachers of, my boss changes every three years, what is expected of me? And that constant turnaround, really, in just absolute, so many towns, is, I was amazed that you've been here for five years, and please, please stay on. But also the idea that you're also looking at future building within the towns and how that affects the school system. Where I'm coming from, they did not take that into consideration, and it's not that my city had, is the only city that is at capacity, max capacity, beyond capacity of what they can deal with in the sense of student bodies. Every town seemed to be building new schools based upon different things, but you're actually talking about it and being proactive about it. Thank you for, you know, confirming that I made the right choice to move to Berlin. Thank you.
Wow, that's kind of powerful stuff you guys are sharing. Thank you so much. So we'll see you either June 20th or 21st, if you're willing to come to the listening session, and then we'll see you on July 12th.
Vehicle for communication if they do that.
Cheryl Nelson.
Cheryl Nelson.
So see Nelson at ebrsd.org, he's been mailing all of the communications. If you feel a need to reach out to anyone of us personally, you're certainly welcome to do that, but in general, if you're hearing concerns, comments, it's best to share them in future.